Okay, call this meeting to order. Please bow your heads for the invocation. Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call. I will say that all council people are here, so we can forego the roll call, John. Approval of minutes. We need a motion to accept the minutes from the city council meeting of July 6th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Move on to audience comments on both non-agenda and agenda items. I will be, and this is, meeting as being a virtual somewhat meeting where we have possible audience in a room next to us. I would ask if there's anybody in that room that would like to speak to the city council at this time.
On agenda items or just non-agenda?
Non-agenda. Non-agenda.
We'll change that for next time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Everybody's here for agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Is, Mr. City Manager, any changes in the agenda?
Yes, before you tonight, I've placed a resolution. I'd like you to add item U to the consent agenda.
Thank you. City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the amended agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and added Resolution U.
Support.
Motion been made and support. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Moving on to items for consideration. The first one being consideration of approving Resolution Number 2020-5, Approval of a SMART Fiscal Year 2021 Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contracts. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution Number 2020-5, which will approve the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contracts for fiscal year 2021. The contracts reflect council's request to fund the Richmond Lennox EMS Community Transit Program with funds that the city receives from SMART. This year, we'll be getting $5,662 in municipal credits and $12,734 in community credits. And with us tonight is Fred Barbret from SMART, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Would Fred like to speak to the council before a motion is made?
I'd just like to say I appreciate everybody's consideration. And Jeff White is here for Richmond Lennox EMS as well, if anybody has questions for him.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody have any questions at this point? A motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contract for fiscal year 2021 and agree to transfer the amounts of $5,662 in municipal credits and $12,734 in community credits to the Richmond Lennox EMS in payment for their community transit service.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Something that we do annually, has worked out very nice for the city of Richmond. Is there any other comments from the public?
None. No comments.
Oh, no comments, I'm sorry. I thought she said Jeff, okay. I can't believe it. Did he say, did Fred say Jeff was here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And he's not saying anything?
Correct.
This is amazing.
What do you mean, Mr. Mayor and council, hello?
[laughing]
That's it, I don't want to hold up any more of your meeting unless you have flashes. I think we went over most of this at budget time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to the table. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of approving a special event request, Wild Lotus Yoga Studio. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to give consideration on a request from the Wildflower Yoga to hold outdoor yoga within the area of the gazebo of Beebe Park on Friday evenings from 6:30 to 8:30, July 24th, July 31st, and then every other Friday through September 25th. Wild Flower, formerly Wild Lotus, is trying to comply with the current executive order and would like to try and hold their yoga outdoors at the gazebo area where they can more easily social distance. The applicant is anticipating six to 10 patrons for each session.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Wildflower Yoga to hold yoga in the park utilizing the Beebe Park gazebo on Friday evenings, July 24th, July 31st, and then every other Friday through September 25th, 2020.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I have one question. The background brief says 6:30 to 8:30, and then your motion, 6:30 to 7:30.
Oh, I believe-
Actually, you didn't let me finish it.
Seven thirty is the ending time on the special application. So, I think that's the actual time. I mean, if they go a little late, I don't think anyone else is scheduled to use the gazebo at that time, but 7:30 is the, is the actual time from their application.
Anything else? Any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table.
I have just a comment that this was discussed extensively in the EDC meeting, and we would like to extend the invitation to other businesses to utilize our park. If you would like to, due to the COVID, we are opening, we would like, if you are interested, please submit a special event request, an application, to the city council so we can continue to support your business and the park if need be.
Anything else? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of the second reading and adoption ordinance Number 156-27, rezoning from RM1 to B3 property located on portions of 31 Mile Road and Main Street. This is a second reading. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give second reading and adopt ordinance 156-27, which will amend the official zoning map and rezone approximately 5.57 acres of property from RM1 Multiple Family Residential to B3 General Business. This rezoning is being proposed by Dick Hoover Land Incorporated as part of a proposal to enlarge and redevelop their central campus or the main dealership located at 67567 Main Street. It's been kind of an ongoing process through several, you know, this rezoning came through the planning commission and was introduced and given first reading last time at your meeting, but prior to that, years back, they had also done property that they acquired from Henry Ford. So, this is kind of the final end game plan of putting all of their properties together under one parcel and one zoning classification.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to give second reading and adopt ordinance 156-27, which amends the official zoning map and changes the zoning of multiple properties located on portions of 37147 31 Mile Road, 37201 31 Mile Road, and 67567 Main Street from RM-1 Multiple Family Residential to B3 General Business.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Any audience comments?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of cemetery rules. Mr. City Manager?
The cemetery rules and regulations were last updated in 2017, and then we made a minor revision at the July 6, 2020, meeting of the city council where we approved the, kind of the niche headstones for the city cemetery. Essentially, although there's a lot of changes here, many of them are reformatting, and then the largest, kind of the most substantive change is allowing larger headstones. Over the years, we've had a lot of requests to allow larger headstones that our rules allowed. Jim Getzinger, our Public Service Director, who was with us tonight to answer any questions, did do an extensive study and talked with our cemetery sexton on kind of the history of why we didn't allow the larger headstones, and we found that there was kind of not a good reason to not allow them, so we're making this, proposing this rule change. Jim is here to answer any questions tonight.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the cemetery, cemetery rules and regulations provisions attached with the memo dated July 7, 2020.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Long time coming, I believe. Good move. Any comments? I believe Jim, our DPW Director, cemetery responsible for the cemetery also is in attendance. Did he have any comments?
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, pretty good.
Okay. The city manager summed it up pretty well. There is this kind of a big section on definitions, there's two sections, actually, of definitions to help clarify the rules. That's a big part of these changes, and then the headstone, there's kind of a big section that struck out, essentially rewrote the whole section to try to make it easier to understand and hopefully to allow some more flexibility in the headstone sizes. I did, of course, speak with the cemetery sexton and get his input, as well as calling other cemeteries and monument companies to get their input. So, we did do a thorough evaluation, and we're hoping that this will streamline the process a little bit and make it easier for those looking to buy a headstone and place it in a lot in the cemetery to get kind of what they're looking for.
Okay, any questions of the DPW Director? Thank you. Is there anybody else there that wanted to make a comment?
None, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of approving Resolution Number 2020-6, Adoption of Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution 2020-6, which adopts the Macomb County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the city's hazard mitigation plan, to be fully compliant with state and federal law. The purpose of the Hazard Mitigation Plan is to identify those natural and man-made caused hazards that pose a threat to the community, rank them based on their potential threat to the people and economy, and recommend mitigation projects to eliminate or reduce their impact. Over the years, pretty much like clockwork, since about 2006, every five years, we present the plan to the council, get the approval. Once all the communities have approved at the county, then is able to get it approved by the EPA. You're, I'm sorry, FEMA.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-6, a resolution adopting the 2020-2025 Macomb County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution on behalf of the city of Richmond.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Any audience comments?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number six is consideration of recreation projects. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a list of recreation projects to be funded through the savings from not opening the pool in the summer of 2020. During the budget discussion, the city council directed administration to meet with the Recreation Board and develop a list of projects that could be done in the park based on the master plan list. Administration took that direction. We had two meetings in June with the Recreation Board. At the first meeting, in addition to considering projects on the master plan list, the Recreation Board had asked administration to look at the pool, as much of the savings were coming from the pool. They asked that we kind of take a look at what might be able to be funded there. So, in addition to kind of the master plan where we looked at projects that were anything under the $60,000 to $70,000 list, we also, at first, had the rec director, public service director, myself, the Jim Franklin, kind of the most experienced as far as setting up the pool, and our pool director did a walkthrough of not only kind of the pool facility, but also the pool house, bathroom areas, those sorts of things, and developed a list of projects that we presented to the rec board. One list was kind of pool projects and pool house projects. The other list was items just within the parks. So, basically, the Recreation Board took a look at both of those lists and compiled kind of their recommendations, which are before you tonight in yellow on page two of the background brief. The total projects come to roughly $40,510. Again, there will be some labor and installation costs with those, so I think they, they hit kind of in the ballpark fairly well. As we've mentioned, because the pool isn't opening, we're going to save in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000. And so, based on that, the, at their June 30th meeting, the rec board made the recommendation to approve those projects highlighted in yellow.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve funding the list of projects recommended by the Recreation Board at their July 30th meeting totaling an estimate at $40,510.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item?
I believe the Recreation Director is here as well.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, or do you want to speak to Margot first? I just want to thank Margot, the director, and also the Recreation Board for taking the time to look into this, and I'm very pleased with the projects that were chosen, especially the updates to the pool house, the restrooms. They're very outdated, and this is certainly something that needs to be happening, so I'm glad that we're going to take care of that now.
Agreed, 100%.
Yes, and I concur with that, and I appreciate the time that they took out to do this, because it, they clearly really considered every line item and thoughtfully picked every item, so I thank you for their time. I do have a question. So, will the shade be just like the one that is by the picnic tables?
It'll be very similar to that one, yes.
Great.
It may be a little different in coloration. We're kind of considering as we make, a lot of the projects listed are, you know, obviously we're going to do the ones that we've approved tonight. A lot of the projects and the work that we did compiling this list will go into the budget work for the next couple of years, you know? So, items that may not have been funded this time will get put into either next year's rec budget or into the capital improvement plan for the next six years. So, I think in looking at the color scheme of our parks, when we look at like the, the new play structure that's blue with the blue canopy and the tennis courts that are blue and blue color scheme, I think the new shade structure is going to be blue where the old one was green, and then we'll probably buy a new, new one as we get to the point where we're painting the building. We may change it from kind of the green color, light green color scheme that it has now over to a blue over time.
Great.
When this all started, we were all very excited about the fact that there was going to be money that was going to be allocated for other things since we couldn't open the pool at the time for various reasons besides the COVID. And we started off kind of looking at where we ended up a year or so ago, looking at the company that we had bought the play structure from. And everybody was excited because we want that play structure for that next age level that we don't have in our park right now. And everybody was very excited about that, but when we got into more of, okay, the pool's closed for a year for the first time and probably since its existence, and also there's some things that are still there from the very beginning in 1968 or whatever year that was. And we had a person from the DPW who does a lot of the work at the pool and has for many, many years now. You know, there was an indication that there was a bad need maybe now to go through it. We'd have the time, it would be shut down long enough that warm weather and everything else that they could get through and get everything done. So, I applaud them. I went to their meetings, and it was, it was tough for some of them to go this direction, a more practical way of fixing everything up at the pool using the money that we would have spent operating the pool. They now have gone ahead and put it into the pool for the most part, and I applaud them. They were very, very good, hard decisions being made at those meetings. So, with that, is there anything else?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I concur with everything you said. I do applaud the Recreation Board for coming to that ultimate solution or to take these proposed projects as the solution for that money that was available. Looking through everything, we do have a few that are non-pool related, but it's about $10,000 out of the 30, out of the $40,000. So, I think it does show that we're trying to keep the longevity of the pool, keep the pool up to date, make it very aesthetically pleasing. So, so I'm very happy with that. Just also wanted to point out that, because some people might hear, oh, $60,000, $70,000, that they would have been paying for the pool, but the actual cost to run the pool is much more, more than $60,000. So, people, you know, you see it on different social media forums, well, you know, now that we can open up due to the executive order, why not just, you know, open up the pool again? Well, it's not that simple, and it's not just covering, we would probably in that case lose even, we'd lose more money than we would because we do have to supplement it even on top of the $60,000 or $70,000. So, but it is a great asset to the community. People get to learn how to swim. That was one of the reasons it was, it was built in the first place, was to make sure that that is there for people to learn how to swim. So, so it is a great service to the city, so I just want to make people clear if they're watching or read about the meeting that it takes a lot of money to operate a top-notch pool, which I would say that with these changes just adds that for our city.
Anything else? Would Margot like to speak?
Um, nothing with the exception of thank you for all the compliments, and I'll make sure that they do get passed on.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else like to speak?
No, sir, none.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven is consideration of board appointments, acceptance of resignation from the Cable Commission and Planning Commission. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider making appointments to the Planning Commission and Tax Increment Finance Authority, as well accepting, as well as accepting the resignation letter from Carolyn Pryor for both the Cable and Planning Commission.
Thank you. Motion would be in order to accept the resignation of Carolyn Pryor from the Cable TV Committee.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Carolyn Pryor from the Cable TV Committee with regrets.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion?
Do we have to? [laughing] She's such a-
I think we let the public know that Carolyn and her husband Jim will be moving north very soon, and I'm not sure how many years she served on that cable committee, but it-
It was roughly 2000, so 19, 2001, 19 years, I believe.
Yeah. It's been quite a while, and we certainly appreciate all those years of service on that commission. And sorry to see them leave, but they, they're moving to, I believe, an area that they had vacationed quite often, north of us, and wish them the best of luck up there. Is there any audience comments?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also need to accept her resignation from the Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Carolyn Pryor from the Planning Commission with regrets.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on that? Carolyn just went on, she was learning quite a bit, she, maybe, what, John, maybe the last six months or so?
Uh, yeah, roughly.
Or somewhere around there, and she was just learning quite, quite a few things about how the city operates and was really, really into it and really, you know, expressed herself well on that planning commission, so we're going to miss her there. Any other discussion? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Now, I would ask you to, excuse me, confirm the, I would say, the reappointment of Bob Matress Act to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Bob Matress Act to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2023.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? And Bob's done a good job. He went to the, the school at the state, I believe it was the state or was it the planning?
Well, MSU Extension and Macomb County, it was the Citizens Planner Academy. Yes, Bob and I went through that together when he first got out.
So, we appreciate that and the time that he spent on that also.
I, I just want to comment on Bob's application. He did want to be on the Economic Development Corporation, and there is space, so maybe we should tell him.
Any other discussion? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, we thank Bob. The other one I would ask you to confirm would be the appointment of Rich Weiner to the Tax Increment Finance Authority. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Richard Reinhardt to the Tax Increment Finance Authority for a four-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2024.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this?
Rich also did put EDC on his that he would be willing to serve, so we could fill some of those spots.
We've got him on Planning Commission already, so I think Planning Commission and Tifa is more than what he cared to be on, but he, I bent his arm a little bit here for Tifa. I think he's going to be a great person on there. He's involved in the community, is a business owner in the downtown. I think his experience on Planning Commission is all very important to that position on that Tifa. I'm sure he'll work well with that board. Any other discussion? And I'm assuming there's no, no one in the audience on these?
No, Rich is here.
Oh, is he? Would he like to speak?
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the council for appointing me to Tifa, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for mowing at the historic village, and Michael, too.
Yeah, it needs it. I didn't get there this week because it looked like it was so burned up. Then I was gone, the rain, all of a sudden the weeds are all up a foot, you know? But it's your turn Wednesday, Rich.
Sir, I'm ready.
What do you say?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, okay. All right, back to the table. Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, we thank Rich for his commitment to the city. Misleadingness matters from the City Manager, sir.
I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday from July 25th, from 8:30 to 1:30 is the city's community garage sale. We'll be having it kind of along the festival field, along Festival Drive there, that'll allow us to kind of spread out the vent- allow us to kind of spread out the vendors and social distance a little easier, so a little bit of a change from previous years, but we're able to make it work. And there's many businesses that are either doing sidewalk sales or sales or just being open, so we're also encouraging people to, you know, if they stop at the community garage sale, to get out there and visit the downtown and business districts. And so, there was some kind of joint advertising out there this Sunday in the Macomb Daily, and I think Wednesday it'll hit the voice, so we encourage everyone to get out.
Very good. And residents are allowed to have their garage sales too in their, in their homes.
Yes, yep, yep. I think there'll be a lot of, yes.
Yeah, hopefully we have a decent weather weekend.
Supposed to be okay. A little warm, but partly cloudy and no, not supposed to be.
Yeah, we're kind of used to that for the last few weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, very good. Council comments, Rob?
Nothing.
Dennis?
Nothing.
Jamie?
Nothing.
Emily?
I just would like to congratulate the Starcraft Brewery for their one-year anniversary event they had over the past weekend, so it was really nice. They had a lot of outdoor events, so it was, you know, you could social distance, and it's just great that they're here, and congratulate them.
And still here after a year of probably one of the toughest years in Michigan.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, it was a very nice event. John?
Nothing.
Nothing. I have absolutely nothing right now. Council will be meeting right after this meeting for our workshop setting to discuss various things at length. We will probably take about a 10-minute break before we head out. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael?
Oh, no, I had nothing, thanks.
Okay, all right. You have that mask on, I don't even see you over there, you know?
Invisible.
Mayor Protem is always second to last to speak. I'm sorry, I missed you there. We have no closed session. Is there any other business of the city council at this time? Be not, motion adjourned, be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you for being with us.